I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of June 16th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor police. Here. Coram President, please join us and I pledge allegiance. Ray, would you like to give the honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is approval of the minutes of the City Council, June 2nd, 2011. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any questions, corrections? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, communications and petitions. Citizens to be heard, we have one citizen, William Adler. If you'd like to step to the podium, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is William Adler. I live at 188 North Central Avenue in our fine city of Wooddale. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to possibly render a situation with the train whistles that come through our town. And I have 150 signed petitions that I have left with the attorney. And I would like to take further action with that. I have left in front of each one of the council members, FRA train fact sheet of how to accomplish the train horn silence program. And it's, you know, I marked it out pretty easily so that it can go right to the point. I mean, I could read through it, but it's kind of self-explanatory. The yellow part is how to do it in the highlighted version. And then in the orange version is for how the city would accomplish this feat. And there are other train quiet zones in the whole area. On the very back page, there's a map and it shows all the quiet zones that are in the area. And ours isn't listed at all. So from personal experience with talking to 150 of our residents, some are, you know, children, they're like, you know, woken up. There's a lot of people that are affected by being a light sleeper. They blow whistles at 10 o'clock at night, they blow them at 8 o'clock in the morning on Sunday morning. Personal experience is past Sunday, had a freight train running through. He laid on that horn until he was through, all the way through down to the train station. And why? There was nothing on the tracks but the train. And in the FRA guideline, it shows that the city would have to do a study and work with the railroad in order to get this done. It's a pretty simple factor. I don't think there isn't, you know, I don't know how much it would cost. And I don't think it's that, you know, that expensive, but I did a lot of research in getting this together for you, so maybe we can make this happen. And that's all I have to say.
Anything else?
I don't think he had a question.
Okay. Well, the petitions, I gave the petitions to the clerk. Alderman Joe Coles.
All right. I ran on, when I ran for election the first time, I ran about the whistles there. And I got ahold of Henry Hyde. And Henry Hyde says that, this is what he said to me personally, he said that any train that goes across four lanes, you have to blow a whistle. Any train that goes across two lanes, they can get away without a whistle. So this is what he told me personally. Of course, we can't get ahold of him now, but...
Right, right.
That was, that was 10 years, 11 years ago. So, I mean, I'm just letting you know. I tried to get that because people on station walk, was one time I was there and they were complaining about the whistles at night, at all kinds of hours. And I lived in Elmwood Park, right by the railroad station in Elmwood Park where it goes across the tracks there. And I heard train whistles all the time. So I know what you're going through and maybe we can try again. We'll see what we can do.
That'd be great. Appreciate your help.
Mr. Murmas, the manager will give a quick history on it.
Yeah, just a quick comment. We had looked at this in the past. It, you do have to cut through some, a little bit of red tape, so it's not as easy as it may seem. And sometimes it does become cost prohibitive. I know the last time when we looked at it, a couple of years back, that was around between $300,000 and $400,000 because you have to make sure that your railroad crossings have other safety parameters in place.
Right.
If it's going to be a quiet zone. And specifically, one of our crossings couldn't meet those parameters to have the quiet zone. And that's where those big dollars start to come in. So we can certainly look at budgeting that. But it's just not as simple as, you know, going out and getting it. And it could be cost prohibitive depending on the intersection.
Yeah, that's fair. I just was wondering if we can try to do something with it again. And this is the most recent information I got off the internet from, you know, the federal railroad administration. So I'd like to try, if we can. Would be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wish to be heard? Hearing none. Next item is mayor's report. We have a presentation for six recipients for scholarships. Mr. Malone from the chamber will go to the booth. We can go there, Mike.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for joining the Chamber of Commerce in co-sponsoring this event. Actually, you guys carry the monetary weight of the thing because you do four of the scholarships and we do two. The history of it, we've done this for, well, I want to say 20 years now. So we're probably a little bit over $60,000 in scholarships that we've given away to Wooddale students. We've tried to cover every high school that's in town. And right now, the current ratio is four scholarships at Fenton High School and one at Addison Trail and one at Lake Park, which kind of represents the way, the number of students that go to each school. So at this time, I'd like to call all of those that are here up. I know one of them is not, which is the first one, Addison Trail High School, Matthew Wesley from Lake Park High School, Barbara Blanchett.
Come on up here, Barbara.
Fenton High School. I had trouble with this the other day, too. Melopini Arenas. I'm sorry, dear. Robert Colombo. Nicholas Delaney. And Andrew Kajuski. Okay. Now, they didn't give me a cheat sheet tonight, so normally I would give you a bio of what they've done in their high school career and where they're going to go to college. But since I don't have a cheat sheet tonight, we're going to ask them just to say a couple of words about where they're going in their future. They did write an essay on a role model in their life and why and how that person influenced them. And then their scholarship committees at their schools picked them to be our scholarship recipients. What I'm going to do at this time is ask you to say who you are and then just a little bit about where you're going to go to school and what you plan for the future.
Hello, my name is Andrew Kajuski. I go to Fenton High School. I plan on going to Loyola University of Chicago. I'm going to be a double major in Biology and Classical Studies and I plan on going to medical school after that.
Wow. (applause).
Hi, my name is Barbara Bahut. I go to Lake Park High School. I'm going to Duke University in August and I'm going to major in Chemistry and I think go on to do pre-med and medicine, medical school. That's it, I guess.
Listen to the real pronunciation.
My name is Melpamani Arianas. I go to Fenton High School. Next year, I'll be attending University of Illinois Chicago with a Biology major and hopes of being a dentist one day.
I'm Rob Colombo. I went to Fenton High School. I'm going to Loyola University of Chicago and plan on majoring in Biology.
I'm Nicholas Delaney. I attended Fenton High School. I will be attending Southern Illinois University, Carbondale, and I plan on becoming a forensic accountant.
Keeping in mind that every year when you see these kids, this is our future. And you guys can keep in mind, if you spend the next 50 years doing as well as some people in this room, you can have a nice room full of people when you decide to move out of town. So with that, I'll turn it over to our mayor and he can give you your checks.
I just want to say congratulations and the future looks good. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, resolution honoring Ray Sodan. Whereas the city of Wooddale... Isn't that? Oh, we don't need that. Sorry. Whereas the city of Wooddale is authorized and empowered under the municipal code and Code of Ordinances of the city of Wooddale to enact resolutions to take each section as provided by law. Whereas the city recognizes Ray Sodan's, Sodan, excuse me, for his unparalleled patriotic service to his country and his tireless public service to the residents of the state of Illinois and the citizens of the city of Wooddale. Whereas Ray and his wife Shirley live in Wooddale and have three children, six grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. And whereas Ray Sodan has dedicated his life to public service, serving his country in World War II and serving his constituents in numerous capacities as a distinguished elected official. And whereas Ray Sodan served as DuPage County Board Member from 1982 to 1992 and was President of DuPage County Forest Preserve District from 1988 to 1992. And whereas Ray Sodan is the former President of the Oak Park and Bensonville Club and Telephone Pioneers. And whereas Ray Sodan was named Wooddale Citizen of the Year for his contributions to the city in 2001. And whereas Ray Sodan has served the citizens of DuPage and the Illinois State Senate since May 1st, 2003, in 23rd District, having been chosen to replace Senate President, Senator James Pate Phillips, where he served as a Senate Revenue Committee and the Senate Republican Task Force on Veterans, where he was a strong advocate on veteran issues. And whereas his tenure as State Senator, Ray Sodan earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues and handled his duties and responsibilities with the expertise of a veteran lawmaker. And whereas Illinois lawmakers and Senate staff by written proclamation recognize Ray Sodan as a friendly person with a generally eloquence of a bygone era and recognized his easy smile and kindness during the long hours of debate on the Senate floor. Excuse me, Ray? I should have asked you to come up here. Come on.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I was happy to sit down there. I rested up after hearing all those things that I've currently done.
I'm not finished, Ray.
Oh, okay.
You have a long list. Ray Sodan, at an early age, elected to serve his country and enlisted in the United States Navy soon after the bombing of Pearl Harbor. And whereas Ray Sodan served in World War II as a Navy sonar man, third class. And whereas Ray Sodan was assigned to the USS Claxton and took part in the North African invasion in November 1942. Whereas Ray Sodan Squadron was then sent to the Pacific Theater of Operations where he saw action in the landings of Okinawa, Sao Paulo, Guam, Leti Gulf, Iwo Jima. And whereas Ray Sodan's military service was recognized with European and Asiatic Campaign Medals and seven Battle Stars. And whereas Ray Sodan Squadron received two Presidential Unit citations. Whereas following military service, Ray Sodan returned to Illinois and went to work for the Illinois Bell Telephone Company from which he is now retired. Whereas Ray Sodan joined the Veteran of Foreign Wars in 1949 at Post 2149 in Bensonville. And whereas Ray Sodan soon became Post Commander and through the hard work that is his hallmark of his career, he increased membership by 573. And whereas Ray Sodan became the Department Commander in 1964. And whereas Ray Sodan also received many appointments over the years, Chairman of Voice of Democracy Committee, Vice Chairman of National Security and Foreign Affairs Committee, Chairman of the National Bicentennial Committee. And whereas Ray Sodan also served on the National Convention Committee and in 1965 served as President of the VFW National Convention Corporation. And whereas Ray Sodan served as Commander in Chief of the National VFW Organization from 1973 to 1974. And whereas Commander in Chief, Ray Sodan presided over VFW's 75th anniversary and helped direct the organization's effort towards determining major steps to find out what happened to the prisoners of war who had not returned from Vietnam and to call for a better care and treatment of those veterans who had returned. And whereas Ray Sodan is active in many civic projects and is a member of several civic organizations, including the Lions Clubs, Klawanis Clubs. Whereas accomplished singer, Sodan performed on the National Barn Dance Program and shared the microphone with such stars as George Goble, Lula Bell and Scotty Homer and Jethro, Red Foley and Andy Williams. And whereas Ray Sodan has lived his life of an exemplary public servant and has been a staunch advocate for veteran rights and veteran affairs, now therefore be resolved by the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois as follows. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
On the question? Comments?
I'll save comments for later.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. The city would like to present you with this plaque and your honor. And there's a couple of people who would like to speak. State Representative Beletti.
I brought a smaller resolution. I don't want to reread those accomplishments, but what a tremendous patriot. When you think of Ray Sodan, you think of that word. A tremendous patriot, an American hero, somebody who I consider a mentor, a great leader for this state and a great leader for this community. A man who has distinguished himself on the field of battle and in the Illinois Senate and in DuPage County and in this community. So with that, I've also brought a resolution, Senator, on behalf of the Illinois House of Representatives. I won't reread this to you because it includes many of those same accomplishments, but I consider you a dear friend and a mentor and you will be sorely missed and Godspeed to you, my friend. Thank you.
Next up is Addison Township Trustee, Matt Losich.
She's sitting right over there. Good evening, your honor. City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Matthew Losich, Addison Township Trustee, and I have a condensed proclamation honoring Raymond Sodan. Comes now I, Catherine Sirmack Duranty, Supervisor, Treasurer of Addison Township, the Board of Town Trustees and Addison Township Employees. Do you hereby salute Raymond Ray Sodan as he embarked on a new journey. Ray Sodan proudly served as Addison Township Supervisor, Treasurer from 1977 to 1983. Ray Sodan proudly served as State Senator in the 23rd Legislative District from 2003 to 2005. Ray Sodan proudly served the entire township as a trusted and valued leader for many years. Ray Sodan proudly served as National Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Ray Sodan proudly served his country and personifies what it is to be an upstanding citizen of this great nation. Therefore, it is with great pleasure that we honor Ray Sodan the 16th day of June 2011.
Next is John Wassinger, Bensonville Park District.
You know, I just want to thank the city of Wooddale, its leadership for asking us to be here this evening. I'm here with Tom Early, one of my colleagues on the board in the Bensonville Park District. I met Ray, actually, I was doing an article for a birthday club with Shirley and some of her friends and Ray attended there. He was the only gentleman there, by the way. And one of the things that was so remarkable at that point and even since then is, you know, this is truly, truly a gentle, gentle man. I mean, the love that he has for his wife, for the state of Illinois, for his country, it's all genuine, it's heartfelt. I've run across very few people that are as ingenuine and caring as this gentleman is. As a public servant, as the other people are here and many others, we look to the stewardship of people like Ray because in order for us to serve and do what we need to do, every once in a while, we have to stand on the shoulders of giants like him to reach out and get things done for the constituents we serve. I consider him to be one of the finest men I've ever met and from the Bensonville Park District. I'm not going to go through all those things because actually, Ray, there's like eight pages behind this, you know? There's a lot of whereases here. But I would like to say, whereas throughout his life, Ray Sodan has consistently acted to the betterment of the Bensonville Park District and the whole Bensonville community. And we, as members of the Board of Commissioners, are proud to recognize his accomplishments. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of the Bensonville Park District, do hereby honor Ray Sodan through the adoption of this official proclamation for his longtime service and recognize him as an honorary resident of the Bensonville Park District for all your days. Thank you, Ray.
Next up is Henry Wesler, Village of Bensonville.
Hi, Ray.
Hey, Henry, how are you?
I'm living the dream. How are you, sir? Well, good to see you. Hello, mayor.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again.
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have any prepared remarks. I actually had the honor and privilege of giving the same accolades that your mayor did at our village board meeting on Tuesday. Mayor Soddo gave me the privilege, since I've known Ray as long as I have, to come here tonight and to just say a few nice words. Ray and I bowl together. And that's what I like to remember most about him is the good times we've had playing cards at the American Legion here in Wooddale after he would get done with bowling. So I didn't want to talk about all of the whereases, as Mr. Wassinger pointed out, because you can get tired of saying whereas and whereas and whereas. But just to let you know, Ray is one of the finest gentlemen I've ever had the honor of knowing. He was good friends with my father. I've been in Bensonville practically my whole life. And just to say that I've sat down and played cards and bowled with him is all that I want to tell you. He's a great man. Thank you very much.
Next, a few words from some of the members of the council. Alderman Wesley.
Ray, I hope I could be a quarter of you as I go on with life here. I'm very proud to live in DuPage County. I'm very proud to be American because it's people like you that give us our freedom and I'm very proud of that. And I'm very proud to know you and for your service with DuPage County Forest Preserve, which was making one of the best forest preserves in this, in this country. And making DuPage County one of the best counties in this country. I thank you for your service and I hope your life is well. Thank you.
Anybody else wants to speak? Then, motion for recess. And we have coffee and cake for everybody.
Motion.
Motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Please join us for coffee. Thank you. I should have let Ray speak. I cut him off the first time. I'm sorry, Ray.
Should have left it the way it was, mayor. Everybody go to coffee and cake. Good evening. To tell you I'm overwhelmed and humble is probably putting it as mildly as I can. What a night and what a great group of people and friends, to the mayor, to the city council, to all of the, my state representative, to John Wassinger from the Park District and from my card playing friend. I had to teach him how to deal. But what a night to say thank you and to see all you wonderful people here. You don't realize what a fine city we live in. You know, I've traveled all over the world as Commander in Chief. I've visited memorials that were beyond your belief in foreign countries. But I'll tell you something. Wooddale is a veterans' city. They have a great compassion and deep feeling for the veterans who serve their nation and rightly so. And I want to commend, I know some of them have passed on, but worked on our memorial on Irving Park Road, which I consider, and wherever I go, I talk about it, as one of the finest in the country. And the tribute that this city has paid to its veterans on Memorial Day, their help and their support with sponsoring a portion of the project along with the VFW is really a sight to see the amount of people that come out and watch it. And it is very heartwarming for all of us. I want to commend the citizens for that. You know, VFW has been a great part of my life, but you may not understand what I'm going to say. I hope and wish and pray that one day there is never a veteran of a foreign war that we have to support and go support other countries and be the policemen of the world. I hope and pray, I wait for the day that we can bring our troops home and let these young men and women live the life that they deserve, to do what they want to do, get married, have children, have fun, live life. And Mr. President of the United States of America, let's get our boys and girls home. They deserve it. With that, I want to keep it brief, but I want to pay tribute to... With that, I want to keep it brief, but I want to pay tribute to somebody I've loved and shared for 65 years this coming September, woman who supported me, traveled with me, went to Vietnam with me, my beautiful wife Shirley. Shirley? It is with heavy heart that I leave Wooddale, but I'll come back and visit, and it's the last time I'm going to move, damn it. My next move is to be to Mount Emblem. I hope that goes off a little ways, but it's eventual, it's going to happen. So I'll be a little close to Wooddale, not that far. But I'm looking forward to different lifestyle with my son up in Michigan, up in St. Joe, which is a beautiful city, and going to be able to fish a little more, hunt a little more, and hopefully, the good Lord will let me do those things. So with that, to each and every one of you, each and every, to my fellow Legionnaires, which I failed to mention, a member of the Legion, and they're a great group of individuals, too. So with that, God bless every one of you, take care of you, give you the good life, and I'll tell you, if I look tired, I am after listening to all those things that I supposedly, you know, supported. Pat Durantey, it's good to see you. It's our leader. He was great, instrumental in my being appointed to the State Senate. So again, thank you to each and every one of you citizens. Keep it up, support your city and your city council, because they're a fine group, and apparently, the constituents, he was right when we elected all of them. Thank you very much.
Before we recess, I didn't ask the VFW if somebody wanted to speak on behalf of the VFW. I apologize. Sorry, Joe.
I've known Ray since 1968, when I moved from Chicago, my post in Chicago, out to here to Bensonville, and a mentor he has been to all of us at the VFW over there, and I've always chosen this gentleman over here to be the chairman of our Memorial Day Parade, because with his knowledge and everything else, that's what's put us through, and helped out with the do's and don'ts and everything else. At the club, his voice is heard, and a lot of problems and a lot of discussions, his voice is always heard there with a lot of authority, because he's been into the realm of every business, and every country, and every state, and so forth. But I want to say, thank you, Ray, for all you have done for Tioga. It's been a pleasure having you there, knowing you there, and working with you there. It's always been a pleasure. I know we all say the same thing. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. Now do we have a motion to recess? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Join us for coffee. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the council meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Here. Coram present, mayor's report's concluded. Next item, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have five items tonight. I'll try to be quick. The Memorial Day Parade is now airing on Channel 6 for Comcast subscribers, and Channel 99 for AT&amp;T subscribers. Our next Everything You Wanted to Know About Wooddale video will be airing after the Memorial Day Parade video in a couple weeks. That'll be, this episode will be highlighting the 2011 Prairie Fest. Also, a representative from DuPage County will be in attendance at next Thursday's committee meeting to talk about the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir and the processes involved in that. Next item, staff will also be having a follow-up meeting with our new ComEd external affairs rep. We have had one so far. I wasn't unable to attend that meeting due to the birth of my son, but we will have another follow-up meeting, and hopefully, we can get that rep into a future council meeting per your request. Also, the Clean Air Counts Committee, which is chaired by Alderman Winger, is working on an exciting new rain barrel grant program. Staff is in the process of working out the final details with the DuPage Water Commission, and will likely be seeking council approval for the final project in July. Last item, residents will see Prairie Fest posters starting to creep up around town and storefronts. If residents would like to get up-to-date information on Prairie Fest, there's now a Prairie Fest newsletter that you can sign up for online, and you get electronic updates to your email address. That concludes my report.
Okay. Alderman Wesley.
I have a question, manager. How's that working with the Prairie Fest emails?
It's working quite well. We actually, we've sent out one blast so far. We just set that up, I think, two weeks ago, and I think we had maybe 25 people signed up already, and we really haven't advertised it that well yet, so we're expecting more. As far as visitors, the website, I mean, we get, you know, hundreds and hundreds of visitors to the Prairie Fest portion of the website, so it's pretty well-visited.
Okay. One more thing. Congratulations to you and your wife for yourself.
Thank you very much.
Next item is consent agenda. We have seven items on the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any questions, corrections? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Wooddale, ordinance 0-11-011. Number two, approval to institute the 2011 Movie in the Park series for not to exceed amount to $5,000. Number three, approval to purchase weather insurance for 2011 Prairie Festival in a not-to-exceed amount of $4,972. Number four, approval of payment request number one for Deer Path Road Construction to Swallow Construction Corporation in the amount of $218,620.22. Number five, approval of final payment request for Elmhurst Street Reconstruction to CNA Cement Incorporated in the amount of $109,425.85. Number six, approval of contract award to Fuertes System Landscaping Incorporated for the city hall brick pavers, sidewalk replacement, in a not-to-exceed amount of $35,161. Number seven, approval of contract award to Fuertes System Landscaping Incorporated for the Wooddale and Irving Park Road Brick Retaining Wall Replacement in a not-to-exceed amount of $46,030. Do I have a motion?
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Mr. Murmas, the manager, has a comment on the movies in the park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that the movies in the park have been approved, we're looking at July 16 for Indiana Jones Raiders of the Lost Ark. That's a Saturday, then Saturday, July 23 for Spider-Man, then Saturday, July 30 for Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, and the last date is Saturday, August 6 for Cars. That's it.
Thank you. Next item, committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Winger?
I have no report.
Next, Public Health and Safety and Judiciary Committee. Alderman Coles?
No report, but I got something to say. Can I say it now?
Go ahead.
On this reverse 11, there are people that are not getting the calls because they have private numbers, and I think in our newsletter that we send out, we should put a note in there that if they want to know about what's going on in Wooddale through the nine, or reverse 9/11, that they should call in and give the police department their telephone number, so they can call them because of an incident that happened in Water One today, and one of my neighbors, my wife, I talked to him, and they didn't know anything about it, so, because she's got a private number. So I think, I think we should let the whole city know about anything that's got private numbers, that they could list them with the police department, and that they could get the calls, if that's all right with the chiefs, the two chiefs up there.
Actually, Mr. Murmas already made a note. Thank you. Thank you.
No report.
Next, Public Works Committee. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have two reports, Mayor. Approval of a purchase of a, to have install of a light of Rington Court not to exceed the amount of $5,708. That is my motion.
And any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Item number two, approve a work order for award to Baxter Woods, the design engineer service for Metro parking lot lights improvement, and not to, not to exceed of amount of $34,000.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You didn't make the motion, did you, Eugene?
That is my motion. I need a second.
Second.
I have one question.
And the question? Alderman Wesley.
Question, is that the parking lot lights? Is that just the lights? I thought that was a parking lot.
Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Chairman, it is for the parking lot and the lights as well. We'll be looking at some LED alternatives. We will be looking at some different pavement options as well, whether or not it's going to be solely resurfacing it, or patching, and some resurfacing, resurfacing in conjunction with that, as the staff at Baxter Woodman have said it's about a four-acre parcel, you know, basically, a fairly large amount of asphalt out there, and then it's, I want to say, talking off the top of my head, it's about 25 to 30 lights are out there now, the control cabinet, the redoing the pole lights and the bases, and all the underground as well.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up?
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Next up, Finance and Administration.
No report.
Alderman Shockey. Next is Other Business. No Other Business. Approval of bills is next. Alderman Shockey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills. General Fund, $96,557.48. The Road and Bridge Fund, $1,226.04. Motor Fuel Tax Fund, $25,667.85. Tourism Fund, $16,457.60. Capital Projects Fund, $360,163.17. Equipment Replacement Fund, $180.69. Sanitation Fund, $75,132.18. Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $29,335.74. And Water and Sewer Fund, $94,152.94, for a total of all the funds of $698,873.69.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion I mentioned.
Do I have a second? Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Page 15, Village of Addison for Mill Road Protection and Sidewalk Project. Did we not make a payment to them already? Or was that a partial payment? How much is this total bill down there?
Mr. Kramer.
Just give me one second. I know Mr. Wilson included in the back of the packet that I received on Tuesday kind of a breakout and a memo on the list of bills explanation. I just want to turn to it.
I know part of this was done by, well, Pate Phillips Grant, or something like that, but I thought we made a payment already to them. How much is this whole project?
To date, the city's paid $8,500 and change. This goes back to 2007. I believe that was for engineering. The remaining of the balance is going to be for Phase 3 construction. The project is complete. The punch list was done yesterday, so we will be seeing a remainder of the balance at a future meeting. Again, traditionally, what happens is Addison gets the bill, they pay it, then we reimburse Addison.
Anything further? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next up, no items to be referred, no items from, information only. Executive session, do I have a mo?
There is one item I'd like to have Mr. Kramer mention about mosquitoes. I think we're all getting a lot of calls about that. If you can update us and the people.
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Last week, Thursday, we did a harbor route around the town, basically trying to get all the forest preserve areas, our boundary areas, our unmanaged areas, either by the county or the forest preserve. Clark did complete that last week. I then asked for a city widespread, which was completed Tuesday evening. We're hoping that that tries to keep most of the adult mosquitoes at bay. Again, we've had a significant amount of rain over the last couple months in the neighborhood of three and a half inches in May. I don't know what the final totals are in June, considering the storm we had come through just last evening. I know it's in excess of two. So again, with all that standing water, we're going to have some mosquito pressure. Again, we'll keep a close watch on the trap counts, and anything, you know, and anytime we can get a timely application to try and keep them at bay, we will. Again, you know, the best protection is trying to avoid being out at just before dawn and just after dusk, and please wear repellent. Outside of that, again, there's a lot of unmanaged areas, areas we can't spray, and there are a lot of breeding grounds now with all those puddles, so if anyone has any standing water in their yard, please try and eliminate that. That's obviously a breeding ground. And again, we'll keep watching those trap counts. Right now, I just spoke with Clark earlier today, trying to look at doing some areas around the creek where we have those standing pools of water, trying to do possibly some ATV applications, and we're going to look at that as well.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the official minutes and collective bargaining.
Make the motion.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're adjourned.